So we can be right for the people of Dixmoor.
Yes, sir.
We can be a servicer to them. Because if you can keep the same mind, logical mind and good heart, well then we can do your will. Please need to ask in Jesus' name, pray. Amen. There you go.
Look out chief! Good gracious!
Can we go back on the agenda and say also present is Police Chief? Mayor Smith.
No, no, it's Mr.
Mayor Fitzgerald Roberts, Frank Oneida, Corporation Cancer, Aaron.
Police Chief slash pastor.
Slash pastor. Private Attorney John Thompson, Frank Yazin, Pete McCann.
And?
And Key Money Recorder.
Key recorder.
Key money rush.
Next on the agenda is the bills for February ninth, twenty twenty-three. We have the total of the bills.
Nah, this is a Dixmoor village meet, not listening to.
Who is that?
Is, um, A R slash treasure on the line? Have you a cash room?
Um, no.
What is the bill amount, um, Trustee McFadden, the Trustee Mills?
I don't have it.
It's four hundred eleven thousand six hundred eleven and eighteen dollars.
And no cent?
I'm sorry, the eighteen cent, I said eighteen dollars.
So four one one six one eight point one eight. One eleven thousand six hundred eighteen dollars and eighteen cents is the bills for February ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
I'm looking for a motion for the, uh, billers.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion was by Trustee Frank Mews, second was by Tito Webster. Trustee Frank Mews?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Mitchell? Trustee Mitchell?
She didn't ask the owner of the house, sir.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Janita?
Uh, yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So you have five yeas and one absent. We have no minutes for tonight, no, uh, one unfinished, unfinished business. Discussions as approval, part-time police academy, police chief, Mayor Smith. Am I saying your name right?
Yes. Lionel Valhalla.
Lionel, is it Lionel?
Lionel or Lionel, general. I was not late for dinner.
Okay.
Hello?
Motion up?
Yes, you correct. So for the police academy, you had?
Okay, in light, in light of, uh, the, the officer shortage that now Dixmoor police is facing, uh, across the state and the country. Um. The state of Illinois has opened up a part-time academy, part-time police academy. Some that they honestly really do, but they haven't done in probably like a year and a half of years. Um, we had about maybe twelve applications at one point in time. Uh, before we opened up, we were just trying to accept just people who were already certified, certified police officers with state of Illinois. Uh, but since it opened up, what that actually has given to, now a clerk there, I have four applications for the academy. Uh, was five, there's four now, and then I have three up there that are already certified police officers. I've already applied for their waivers and just waiting to get back to the state of Illinois. Uh, I have each one of those, I have their files right here, if the council would like to hear any debate about each particular one.
Why don't, why don't we, if you don't mind, why don't we take this?
Take a session.
Exactly, a session, it's a closed session with the, uh, who is that? I mean, I'm not really, I'm young, but. For us to go through this, really talk about more. You don't mind me, sir?
No, not at all, appreciate you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have approval of ordinance to regulate business license, other license in the village. I can send that email out to all the board members.
Yes.
Now I can't speak a little, um, about it. So basically it's just, I can read a little. Um, this just give us license regulation like license fee and approval cert- certificate license permit issued by village. Person means any individual, corporation, company, foundation, association, label organization, group of organizations or state of or local government. Village means the village of Dixmoor. Village code means the village of Dixmoor, code of ordinance. We just have license requirement and outstanding debit and A V. So if anybody want me to read a couple of them, I can. One thing is said, they must pay their, um, license fee in whole. No village should be granted issue to a person that owes any fees, fines, payments, penalty or debt to the village. And no such person should be allowed to apply for a village license of any kind or register himself, herself, itself or any family members to participate in any village program activities, recreation department programs unless and until all the outstanding bands, I mean, fees and vice paid for. So that's the one license. Yes, it's an ordinance. The second one is. We need to put one down.
Okay, so, uh, with this first one that you did bring in, I'm looking for a motion for that. Uh, it's basically saying you have debt or something like that, you cannot receive a license here in the village of Dixmoor, the old Dixmoor.
I make the motion. Motion by Trustee McFadden, second by Trustee Webster. Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Frank Mews?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
You have six yeas. The next one is approval of an ordinance regarding business license. An ordi- an ordinance approval and increase in annual business inspection fees from the village of Dixmoor, county of Cook, state of Illinois. So the village has decided, the village has decided to have an annual inspection on business chief?
Yes.
And we will be having a meeting next week to discuss that.
And that, is that an annual fire inspection?
Correct, that's following with the building, fire is, is tied with it, so the schedule would be between myself and, uh, Mr. Butler. Make sure that they coexist together.
That, now that, um, sorry, mayor.
Trustee Smith?
Now that's, um, we, that's part of the contract that we have, the intergovernmental agreement with inspections too. Is that different from what you're doing?
No, that's, I, I just, I do the fire inspections, I give my reports to them, they just deal with fire suppression inspections.
Yeah, 'cause you know in that contract, remember it was so many inspections that, you remember, you remember something of that nature, uh, uh, we had to do so many inspections or else they were going to charge us, so, I, I don't know, had you?
Well, this one is the one just for the given annual business because we do not charge. So, we do not charge the business for inspection, so this is what this is.
Correct.
So we not gonna charge them?
We are, this is what we have.
Okay.
We have to have an ordinance, yes.
Yeah, I make the motion, we make the charge in businesses.
And then the follow-up, your question, the inspection reports, trustee, they get sent over to the fire chief at the office.
So that was motion by Trustee Smith.
Do you go second?
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Frank Mews, Trustee Frank Mews?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
And Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Next approval of license for Dixmoor, um, cigar, tobacco, he was here at the five o'clock meeting. Uh, we're gonna table this till the next meeting.
No, we don't.
I mean, we're gonna make a motion.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm bored, there's something, uh, uh, that the gentleman brought up, which is something that you guys went through last time. Uh, when he was saying, uh, they wanna vape, have a vaping slash work, uh, so what, what, what was stated to the gentleman in the committee, I thought it was gonna have, you know, just way you going by tobacco and cigars and so forth, but he said, no, they gonna be vaping too, so he say he, he say he can't do his store without having vaping there too. So. So, so it was pretty much, uh, uh, stated, uh, pretty much he had options, so he said that, uh, he's not going to do one without the.
So is this the same store that?
Uh, no, no, it's different, it's in the same location, but it, uh, altogether, uh, different gentleman, so.
He say he's.
Uh, would I do, I mean, uh, should, should I put it on, should I put it on the floor and then vote on it, or?
Sure.
Okay, so, so boy, I'm, I'm.
So, excuse me, Mayor, um, boy, can we go back up to the, um, the orders that we just passed? We need to put a fee amount. Pete? With the inspection?
That's, that would be at the position.
Well, if they, if, if, if they get an inspection by the, uh, fire and building department, I mean, yes, I think we should give all, uh.
So we need to reset motion of just adding. Okay, so, um. Okay, so we'll be. Okay, so just the motion said, but it's two.
If you, correct, if you did one for building and one for fire, then it would be two, if you did it like that.
One, two.
Okay. Okay. Two hundred.
So, how, you, you do this?
Correct.
You do this, not just here.
Correct.
How much is the normal, how much you even need?
It, it's typically a hundred dollars was the fair market value per inspection and other missed salaries.
Okay.
That's why I said.
So you don't do it, so I got you.
Move together.
One for just fire, then one for, so that's two then.
Okay, so we, two hundred.
Correct.
Are we amending? So you gonna read it out, put?
So the board has got, um, we're looking for a motion and a second for the business license annual fee, one hundred dollars for the fire department inspection and one hundred dollars for the building inspection annually, which is a total of two hundred dollars.
And also.
Motion by Trustee Webster and second was by Trustee Smith, discussion, Mayor?
Uh. I believe we passed one for the food inspection, inspector. Food inspector, time inspector, uh, restaurants and food inspector?
Health inspector.
Health inspector?
Sure.
Okay, we'll come back to that.
Okay, Trustee Frank Mews?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell? Trustee Tyson?
Wow.
Trustee Tyson?
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson, two hundred dollars for the annual business license?
This Trustee Mitchell, this Trustee Mitchell, yes.
You got six yeas and no absent. Next is approval. Um, are you just on the approval?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, she got, she got you now, T, I mean, Trustee Webster.
So with the license for the, um, approval of an ordinance regarding business license, it was another ordinance that went with, it was an ordinance requir- requiring a business license to operate a business office
Hello?
in the village of Dixmoor, county of Cook.
I didn't hear that.
I went, 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 went.
The first one? It was two, it was two ordinance in one, approval of an ordinance regarding business license. An or- ordinance requiring a business license to operate a business office in the village of Dixmoor, county of Cook, state of Illinois.
So. So with that, pretty much what she's saying, if you gonna have an office in Dixmoor, what we doing is passing an ordinance for an office in Dixmoor.
So is that like a home-based business?
It's like a home-based business. Right.
Well, I tell you, you coming up with these orders, I mean, uh, so I hear you, Mayor. Can you elaborate more, 'cause now we talking about a business.
It's a business license for a business office, so if you operate a business office, you have to.
Hello, can I right here, please?
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry.
That's trustee.
I can't hear you.
It's, it's like a home-based business, like when people run a office.
We need an ordinance in place because we've been getting a lot of home-based business license people. Why?
We, we need to put the orders in place for that, so we can. It's not in the house, it's in the, in the commercial place, it's a office. In other words, if you want an office in Dixmoor, you gotta pay, you gotta pay for a license.
No, that, that's fine, but I thought we already had that established, 'cause remember, the reason I'm saying that, 'cause you remember we have people that have been saying they had businesses here, and all of a sudden, um, they, they came before, you know, now they wanted to come before the board, that's why I'm saying, we already had something in place for that.
Trustee McFadden?
Okay, I just wanted to ask, can we make that office slash home? So it can cover outside or inside the home?
So in other words, what it do is gonna, it'll just cut down on one license where it say office slash home?
Right, so.
It's either or, but you got to pay.
Same thing. Okay.
And the fee that you pay now is seventy-five dollars for a home-based business, so.
No, it's like them two hundred, I mean, because they making, well, y'all saying, well, they making, they making money. Okay, so, uh, you gonna make more than two hundred dollars. Right. So I, you know, I, I say take it to two hundred, they making money, we, we talked about that with that, what was that, that, that cart, I, I don't know. Our mobile home, mobile trailer, and, and we, I don't even think we making no money, and they would make some good money, which I'm happy for them. But I'm saying two hundred dollars, this up to the board.
Are you saying two hundred dollars?
For the license.
Keep it all, keep it all the same, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, for the license, yeah, 'cause they gonna make money.
It depends on business, so.
Is that it?
Okay, no, I have.
Well, how two hundred is reasonable, but it depends on business that they.
Depends on what type of. It depends on the type of business, really, and then it depends on how long he gonna, how long he planning on being there in its space.
Right, and so all that energy in the order.
The license I'm not transferable, so almost they pay.
Right, but, but that's what I'm saying, so. Uh.
So it, it can start at two hundred.
Two hundred.
Seventy-five, Mayor?
Yep, yeah, that's what it is, that's what.
For a home-based license.
But we slashing home-based and what you say?
Yeah, to make sure that.
But this one, this one.
But it can start at.
So if you reach, if you reach your orders, everybody that I sent to, it says a hundred dollars. Everybody, it says a hundred dollars, exhibit eight says, the annual fee for to operate a business office should be a hundred dollars. And that's what we said in the orders, but.
So I'm looking for a motion to pass the ordinance for the, uh, business office license. A hundred dollars.
Motion by Trustee Webster? Second by Trustee Tyson, Trustee Tyson?
Yeah.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Trustee Frank Mews?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
No.
You got four yeas and two no. Looking for a motion for approval of Dixmoor Cigar and Tobacco Corporation? So we need a motion and second, then, um, then you can, you can roll call. Motion was by, motion is by Trustee Webster, second. Second by Trustee Tyson, Trustee Tyson?
No.
Trustee Webster?
No.
Trustee Frank Mews?
No.
Trustee Janita Smith?
I'm standing.
Trustee McFadden?
No.
Trustee Mitchell?
No.
You got five no's and one abs- one absent.
Next one, just quick.
Next on the agenda, approval of auto equipment company for the forty inch, forty inch pallet forks. Trustee Webster, do you want to speak about that?
Yeah, I think, we actually need that equipment because, you know, we think that, uh, every time we have water delivered, we have to go buy someone that has a, a full lift truck to, uh, you know, box cats, actually remove the water from the, from the trailer. Um, I'm just, I'm thinking we're at a point, I would need to just buy a fork and have our own, then we can dictate, you know, the truck does not just sit there and wait on us to, uh, unload the water off the truck.
And how much is it? How much was it?
I thought it was, uh.
I have it right here.
Eleven fifty, I think.
Please.
One thousand one hundred fifty dollars, yes, sir, I have it right here.
I, I, okay, that sounds.
So, looking for a motion, any more discussion? Looking for a motion?
I, Trustee Smith, I make the motion to the meeting.
Motion by Trustee Smith, we need a second.
I second.
Second by Trustee Frank Mews, Trustee Frank Mews?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Tyson?
Yeah.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Six yeas.
Thank you, boy. Thank you, thank you, I don't know how I'm thanking you for that, 'cause every time I go to Trino's and have to drive it, feed it back over here, I thank him for letting us use it, but I be really shook up when I get here, by the time I get here. Yeah, I get all shook up, tatty back.
Approval of business license for one forty-five twenty-seven Southwestern Avenue, unit six.
All right.
Office space.
Yeah, office space. Do you want to discuss?
Can we make a motion and second then discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion is by Trustee Webster?
Oh, uh, I can second, I second.
Second by Trustee?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Uh, we want, uh, oh, can, yeah, can you second, yeah, Mayor? What are you doing there?
Yes.
Oh, no, uh, my chance, you have.
No, I didn't vote, sir.
That is so.
Can you hear clear, uh, Mr. Webster? Can you, can you hear clear, Ms. Mitchell, Trustee Mitchell?
She has to unmute herself.
She can hear, if he can hear, 'cause this, it's evening, okay, can you speak?
Yeah.
You got that?
Somebody keep muting.
What's she saying?
She said somebody keep muting.
Oh.
You know, you know everyone can mute it, uh, trustee?
No, no, he got.
Okay.
Good evening, board, Mayor, trustees, clerics, the, uh, staff. So at one forty-five twenty-seven Southwestern Avenue, I'm, uh, currently running a political operation there, running for Aaron Harvey, and releasing our space for the next three months here in the village of Dixmoor to run field operations, so there will be no sales transactions, uh, strictly phone making, be the sponsor volunteers, and, um, that's it.
Hey, I make a motion. Y'all hear me?
But it was a motion by Trustee Webster, it was second by Trustee Smith, we need to discuss.
So, so, discussion, do you want anything to discuss?
I don't need to discuss.
So what is he? So what do you, you have, uh, business license? So I'm about to give one here, that's why, once I get approval, then I guess I come in and pay the fees or whatever is required. Are you trying to run out of the? I'm already, yeah, I already signed the lease and then that too.
Okay, so he going to profit away because see before we didn't have profit ways, so I appreciate this, yes?
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Trustee, uh.
Okay, so the office is gonna be for your campaigning only?
Just campaigning, yeah.
Just campaigning?
No sales or anything.
Okay, so it's just a place where you'll be actually congregating to get your business and stuff, yeah?
Correct.
Okay, I got you.
So when will you start going in? Soon as I get business license. Thanks, sir.
Uh, roll call, you, you have anything to say, uh, Trustee Mews?
No.
No? Roll call.
Trustee Tyson?
Yeah.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yeah.
Trustee Frank Mews?
I'm standing.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Five yeas and one absent.
Next.
Approval of business slash porn license, one forty-three oh one Wood Street?
A what?
Business slash porn license?
I know what it sound like.
Porn.
Time out. Oh, man. We all right with everything, y'all, okay?
Yeah.
My, my, uh, okay.
Well, we need to discuss that, we just.
You need a motion and second, first?
Looking for a motion?
Yeah, Trustee Smith, I, I make the motion too.
Okay.
Just for query, let's go back and let's for query.
Okay.
Uh, we had a committee on the whole meeting at five o'clock. It's unfair to me and it's unfair to the mayor that you all are not gonna be here, and then we get here at six o'clock, and we wanna discuss stuff at six o'clock. I know everybody have things to do, but please have the courtesy to call before five o'clock and let us know that you're not gonna be here, and then we can cancel the meeting.
Uh, well, I'm gonna speak for myself, I do that, I did that today.
At four fifty-three.
I called, but I called you, I was at the dump.
Right, but I'm just asking, can you please call a little earlier, because I was here all day, I'm not getting on nobody, but I'm just saying, just give the courtesy, because we sat here, we kept trying to call, which I knew Trustee Smith, you did a call, we was trying to call other individuals to see, are you gonna come? We sat here till five forty-five, one person showed up, another person showed up, and now we're discussing. I have a life, I have a family just like everybody else, I'm not getting on you, but I'm just saying, if you're not gonna come to the meeting, then say I'm not gonna come to the meeting. That's all I'm saying, just the courtesy, pick up the phone, everybody texts everybody, we texting everybody, we laugh, we do all that, it's not fair. So maybe I should stop coming to the committee meeting more. It, it's not in my pay, to come to committee meetings, state statute only require me to do the regular board meeting, and I'm just tired, it's just too much.
Well, I mean, if you want, you want to discuss that and then.
No, I ain't discussing, you ain't on. But you need to call, but I'm just saying, you just said the first time, you're not the only one, Trustee Smith.
I, I, I always, I always call because that's my tertiary.
Right, but it's not, you don't.
But I will, I do call, but maybe we need to discuss what we all should be at the meeting. I mean, since you wanna, the mayor saying, get on, we all aren't supposed to be at the meeting.
No, with the, with the, with the, with the new thing, you have to be at the meeting. That's all we asking for, just give us a call.
Hold on, guys, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, time out. Thing of it is, is that, uh, now see, you don't clerk, that, that, that's because, that's just my little sense of having fun, okay?
Yes, you told me. Get off, get up!
No, uh. No, 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 but, 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 uh, of course, guys, look, springing, everything is coming in. If, uh, we gonna do the discussion and talking. If, uh, we gonna do the discussion and talking, let's try to, everyone, all of us, if you can, let's make the committee meeting. I can't, I can't, but I was late. I must say, I was about fifteen minutes late. Brother Tyson was about thirty minutes late. McFadden, Mr. Hughes, they beat me in the door, McFadden probably was here since last night. But anyway, uh, well, can you die, we just gotta, you know, it's time to tighten the belt up a little bit, strap up a little bit more, because I'm telling you, you just gotta crank it up. But we will also have the committee meeting on Zoom also, but I would like for all of us to show up and show our face.
Are you able to send a text a little earlier? No, it's not like that. Listen. I got a life, you want me to start talking like that too? No, but I'm not saying that like that, I'm saying the text message help. And I said when, he said right now, I said, oh lord, let's go down the street.
Exactly, so, so the thing of it is, if we need to send out a reminder, we will send out a reminder to everyone, okay?
And similarly. We all, we made.
You get the reminder, we sent it to you on Tuesday.
Wait, oh no, seriously, we only, we only have the, you know, the, wait, uh, two, two thousand, no.
This is family, bro. At his best, and ain't nothing, ain't nothing foul. He's just having a fun.
The second Thursday and the.
Is every second and fourth, Thursday, those are the ones.
That's what I have to do too.
No, he, he know. Some of us got different, all of us got different stuff that we.
He talking about the heat issue.
Approve of a business slash porn license.
So I'm making a motion.
It was motion by Janita Smith and second by T. Two.
Robo call.
It's discussion.
Discuss.
Crank it up.
Okay.
Trustee, trustee. Trustee, uh.
He said you represent.
Uh, you want to discuss?
You represent who? Ron DePa.
Okay.
That's what you're talking about, the business license.
Come on, break it down.
What's the question? Okay, so one forty-three oh one, uh, they're requiring visual actions for a place called Maddie's, which will be gaming in a bar. If you're familiar with the place, it's not really a large place for your ideal bar, but, uh, because we have to have a porn license for the state, requirement to have slot machines, the owner, uh, was smart to integrate the bar with the gaming machines. So that's what it is.
So.
Trustee.
I have a few questions.
How many do you have?
I got, he know we on.
I'm going to ask as many questions as I can.
Okay.
Mr. Butler's not here, so Mr. Two, I need your assistance on this one. Is the building complete?
Not yet, so it will be.
Then you can't get a license for something that's not complete, number two. Number two, number two.
I'm not sure about Mr. Muse, though, we had an extension done yesterday.
Okay, so he.
Number two. Okay, number two. How are we going to give someone a license for a place that we're, shouldn't be open in the first place? They owe us money, they owe back taxes. On this, this particular property, there's a problem here, I have to say no until this problem is cleared up. Something is not right about this, it don't smell right, it don't look right.
Okay, well.
I ain't got taste right, I ain't show you.
Trustee, trustee, if, if, if the owner owed taxes, that's the owner, not the person that's opening the place up. That's the owner, so we can't judge the person that's opening the place versus the owner.
No, you can't. Okay.
All right.
My thing is, the owner is getting money off of this, and we're not getting what they owe us.
Okay.
So I see no reason for us to turn around and give a license to someone who is getting something from someone who is not paying us what they owe us. They're putting them in the middle, but at the same time, we're not getting, uh, what we're due out of this. I cannot see myself okaying a license, because it's not right. Like I said, it don't smell right, it don't look right, and it might not taste right, I say no way. No way, something ain't right about it.
Trustee Smith? I mean, were you two, trustee McFadden?
Go ahead.
Okay, trustee Smith.
You know that, I, I support you for whatever you do, when we discuss, I discussed this with them. Right now, my focus is on that, that corner, on one hundred and forty-sixth avenue, you know, we talked about that. And, and now, you know, we, we talked about another establishment, when we don't, we don't have that, that other one, that I've been looking forward to having those, whatever, the, the stuff knocked down, because that, that's part of yours too.
So trustee, because it's for your parents, I don't want, and I don't want to mix the two. Correct, because my name is not on that particular Wood Street one, my name is on that project, but in public comment, I will talk, uh, about, what actually, I tell you, I'll continue to give more updated, what's going on, so, I will do that at specific comments part, but I don't want to mix these two ideas up here. Because I'm trying to get approval for one forty-three oh one Wood Street. Uh, now, to answer trustee McFadden, we do not, as in terms of Maddie's bar and video game, owe the building of Dixmore any money. Now, the issue of what the current owner does owe, did come up, uh, so I did advise the people going to project to do a title search, to make sure the money should have been given to them when they offered their lease, and in fact, they own the property, and there's been remedies done to get the, the property back up into good standards with their tax back taxes.
Until, until I see the paperwork where it is where it should be, there's no way I can agree to this. I cannot allow someone who has been misusing the village to make a profit. Well, now, listen to what I'm saying, though, but listen to what I'm saying. I cannot allow someone who has been misusing the village to make a profit off of someone else who thinks they're the innocent person coming in, but they giving this person a profit. This person still has the money they owe the village, they're still collecting money from someone else, the village is still out of money. And you got another party that's involved in this, there's no way. Get it right from the beginning, the only way we can get it straight is straighten it out from the beginning and straighten it out all the way through. There's no way in the world I can say this is okay, no, they don't owe the village any money, but they're dealing with somebody who does. If you are dealing with a drug dealer, I cannot say what you're doing is okay. You might not be dealing the drugs, but you're dealing with somebody that is. I can't okay that.
So, okay, trustee Muse, how many? Trustee, trustee Muse?
Um, I don't know if this is be considered as a real estate matter, but if, if so, can we take executive session? Does that have some questions?
Okay. Okay, so we, we'll take that license to executive session, uh, but I'm not wrong, I know I'm not wrong on this. If there's not, now, I'm just going to let you know, trustee, uh, McFadden, if there's not an ordinance in place, you can't stop them for that tax rate. I, I, I know I'm right on it, I also asked, uh, the city in place for corporation counsel, in order to stop someone from getting a license, who has not paid taxes, on that end of it, it must be an ordinance in place for that. But we'll take it to closed session before the discussion.
So mayor, this, so my clarity, so the real estate issue and the license issue are two total things, I'm not here for the real estate issues, I'm here for a business license.
I, I understand this, so, so what we'll do, we'll take that into consideration, take it to executive session, and our clerk will get back in touch with you.
So, so what happened to that?
I didn't say that. I said that.
But is this something that we, is this something that's supposed going to, because you know it's on the same thing that goes to closed session? Right, oh no, I, I know, that's why I just said, I don't know, that goes in closed.
Real estate is not on the agenda, that's just, I say, what we can discuss.
Wait, wait, hold on a minute, wait a minute. Okay, so do we have something to do with real estate?
I mean, taxes for real estate.
Okay, thank you. So it can go into closed session, because real estate is on the, uh, paperwork. Now, if you all don't want to go into closed session, you all want to vote on it now, you can vote on it now.
But, but he still want to talk about, is this okay for him to talk about, you know, when you say you're going to.
I can't discuss the real estate part, because I'm not the owner of the property, but I deal with the back tax.
So, 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 so basically what you want, you, you looking for a license, you looking for a license, a vote for a license, to move forward with whatever this is?
Correct, the other thing is, the village doesn't have a rule or, or there's a place that's saying you owe back taxes that you should do.
Well, I, I already spoke on that.
Yeah, I heard, that's what, that's what I'm continuing, what the real estate part is.
So basically, he's looking for a license.
That's, that's something.
Okay.
And, and I.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, and I understand that, uh, I guess part of my questioning was the gaming, the poor, um, and I don't know if, and the location, um, and then the whole, uh, rehab of the, the space. So I had multiple questions, and I don't know if I can get those answers right now.
We're speaking to rehab, we did pull building permits from the planning department, uh, like I spoke earlier, fire inspection was done yesterday. All within code, so that did happen, I did, did pull permits and that happened.
So are we able to speak on the gaming license?
Are you on, pardon me?
Are we able to speak on the gaming licensing, licensing at this time?
Yeah.
Also, the gaming license, that goes through the state, so the state give you guys your share of the revenue from the state, so you can't do nothing without the state. The first step is get approval from the village, but your money and taxes from, will come directly from the state, so it's not like we can skip out one thing in the village. If that's not possible, money comes straight from the state, correct, sir?
So since he's standing there and out, I know you're going to talk about, you know, you're going to talk about, uh, public comments, but I don't need to talk about. That's on base, that's going to be based on my vote.
Okay.
Okay, you know, and, you know, I.
I'm going to mix them, trustee, I, I don't. I don't. You can't mix one with the other.
Okay, let me ask you this, because you said you were here on behalf of. You keep saying we, so what, what, what they?
But I'm, okay, uh, hold on, wait, 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 wait. I'm looking for a motion, uh, to, uh, have a gaming slash porn license at one forty-three oh one Wood Street. Looking for.
I'll second it. Most of it, we still haven't discussed about it.
We just, we just, it's a vote, if, okay, if you want to discuss them, go ahead. Because you haven't said that yet, so. Everybody has discussed already.
I know, we just trying to, you know, everybody got concerned, you can see what's going on, is it this, is it gaming, like, when did this happen, when did this take place? You know, and certain thing like that, like, some people ain't got a problem with it, but it is a question, I can see that, like me. You know, it could be all good to me, but maybe somebody else, it might be something different, and if we kind of beat on the table and we don't address certain things, then, and we just go into a vote, maybe it might not turn out the way it goes.
Trustee, we, the, the thing of it is, we still here in the circle. We'll be here all night, okay, and, 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 I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not going to be here all night, on that one issue. Okay. He, he presented, Ms., uh, trustee McFadden said her, her piece, trustee Janita said her piece, trustee Frank Muse said her piece. If you want to say yours, say yours, Tony Mitchell can say hers, and, and, and trustee Webster can say his, and then we'll make our vote. But please, one minute for everybody, because we're not going to sit here another thirty minutes or fifteen, twenty minutes on one issue.
Yeah, no. Anybody else got something to say?
You got something to say, Tony Mitchell? I mean, I'm so sorry, trustee Mitchell? She got unmuted, sir.
No, she not muted this time.
Trustee Mitchell?
She's still over here, I think this is her phone number, she's not muted, so maybe she stepped away from the phone.
Uh, so, I mean, I'm looking for a motion.
We already have a motion, there was a motion.
Yeah, okay, long the place is in compliance.
Trustee Webster? Trustee Smith?
No.
Trustee Tyson?
Yeah.
Trustee Frank Muse?
No.
Trustee Mitchell? And trustee McFadden?
No.
Is she right there?
I, I don't know, I mean, she's still on here.
Hello, hello?
Huh?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, did you hear what we were saying? What we were talking about? What she say? Okay, so it's for a gaming and porn license at one forty-three oh one South Woods.
Okay, what's there?
Uh, they want to open up a gaming and porn license, a video slot machine.
Is there a store already there, is that what you're saying?
Yes, but on the other half over there, you know that corner where it was vacant at?
No, I don't, I wouldn't pass on that one. My next one.
So, so is it yes, no, abstain, or what?
Uh, abstain. Hello?
Yeah, I got you. Okay, next one in general.
Citizen comment, Marsha, you come back up.
Good evening, board, so now I'm representing Dixmore, Stilley Moore, and, uh, C. as a partner of that project, um, and you guys attorney, Jenny, can I have a more, uh, articulated issues? Uh, from our end, currently working on the site plan, with the architect, we are working with Combi in terms of moving the current power lines from that alley to make the project go. I do appreciate you guys, um, supporting the efforts, we just, like I said, currently waiting on attorney Selly, and my attorney hasn't any communication with him about it.
So we've been, because I've been thinking this, you are. No, I know, I'm saying, wait, you remember, because I, because it's been, we've been talking about this for like more than a year.
Correct.
And I've been looking forward to it, so now my understanding is, you guys.
No, so we have some business stuff in terms of building issue, there's also some things Mr. Thomas, uh, in terms of property ownership that we're cleaning up, or, you know, that the village is cleaning up, I should say, um, and we are, so that's what's, everything.
So what we waiting on now?
TIP, property cleanup, and then the finish of the final design from architect and the site plan. So once architect, so the ideal here is to break ground in spring, and be up and open my fall soon, it's going to be. That's it, that's the big timeline.
So you waiting on my attorney to respond to you?
There's a common one of things going on, but they are working on the TIP and the property cleanup.
We had a conference call last week, but.
Okay, so like I said, my attorney, or the attorney group is being in communication with the Selly, is in. I mean, I don't know how much has to be moved on TIP and property.
I mean, I don't know how much has to be moved with tills and property. Any other questions?
So, you can't really talk on the tills?
So, that information has not been shared, particularly with the attorney or myself. We, that's something that you guys attorney have to share out with, talk with your attorney, speak to him about it. Or Mr. Thomas?
I don't know. I don't know. You've all there, but.
Thompson.
Thompson. John, can you speak on that?
I don't think at this point I would like, uh, tell.
Oh.
I, I thank you, um, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate.
Please reach out. Anytime is a question.
I discussed it with him Wednesday. He said, bring it to the board today. And.
What does it do? I missed.
It's June. I don't want to be last minute again because we're losing grants, so I would say it's, it's June the seventeenth. That's the last day that all grants have to be in, by March seventeenth. You don't want to get caught up with, uh, we don't have to pass it today?
Which special question? What, what we talking?
God, God's will, God's will, hold on, John. God's will on, uh. Tuesday.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I guess we can do via Zoom. Can we, can we do Zoom on Tuesday?
I can do.
No, we, 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 we can do a quick Zoom, we know Tuesday.
It's something we can't do tonight?
No, because it's not on the agenda, and it's something that we need to pass to, to receive funding, so.
He said he got tomorrow.
He said March, trustee.
She said you're in tonight, but continue that you're right here.
No, he didn't. No, he didn't.
Hold on, hold on, guys. We're waiting. When it come to this village receiving funding. If it's something need to be passed ASAP, I appreciate if we don't have no issue with passing, getting funded. It's $400,000 that need to go on our agenda, especially cause special meetings, everything else. So, I would like to call a special Zoom meeting for Tuesday. Do you guys come in the building? We can do it over the phone. No, you can't, you can't do it tonight because it's not on the agenda. But anyway. We need to get that taken care of, much as I've been, we've been running back and forth to Springfield and everywhere to get money in here and get programs done. Let's get this done. So, yes.
About that, ladies and gentlemen.
I don't care. They ain't saying nothing but yes for, for a Zoom. You gonna be picking up one still. Just do my time. I don't care what you say. Boss, what time?
Could, could I just help with this one section?
Yes, please.
We have, we didn't get a chance to do a department report.
Mm-hmm.
At this time, they just opened the grants for CDBG block grants and Cook County first. Both of those grants we applied for last year.
Okay.
We didn't receive any funding because of the monies that the county had, had allocated to help us out with the water main line, the six hundred thousand. This year, to be on time, so that we, if there's any corrections or any problems, we'd like to have this done prior to waiting to the last minute or to the first of March, and then we can't get everything taken care of. Those are two grants, just two grants, and I'd like to have both resolutions in my hand.
Mm-hmm.
If we're going to do it, not tonight, I'll have two resolutions, and I'd like to have them ready for any special meeting that you want to have, or we could have them ready for the following board.
No, 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 we're in line.
Okay, well, could you give it to Thursday so I could get both grants, both resolutions ready?
You can't have them ready by Monday?
I'd have to check with the engineering firm because they have the other resolution that I need, and they're going to give it to me, and then I'll turn the resolution in.
So, give it, give it to Thursday?
Yes.
Or Wednesday?
Yes.
Fifteen thousand.
With Wednesday, brother.
Wednesday would work.
And we can vote on it Thursday.
Yes.
Okay, so we go, border. You can't vote on it tonight, trustee.
Oh, no, you know, I know that. I was just asking John why we're having tonight. That's all I was saying, because we, you just found out the day you go.
We.
Found out.
We just, uh, they just opened the grants on Monday. And we talked, mayor and I and our department, we talked about the grants, and we.
Have it ready Wednesday, sir, please.
We just got our GADA, mayor.
General.
Oh, yeah, we got it. I like that.
They got it going on. Have it ready for.
We'll have everything ready for Wednesday.
And we're.
We have two resolutions.
We'll send you guys, we'll, we'll shoot you all an email for Thursday, because I know ain't nobody in this room going to go down and receive any funds. If they do, put on your glove. Next on the agenda. Is anything else? Are you? Anything else?
No.
Okay, so now, uh.
Any citizens come in?
Public comment? No public comment.
No public comment? Can we get a motion to second to John?
I made the motion.
No, we're going to closed session.
Oh, executive session.
Executive session.
What, we spoke about?
Oh, I think we said, we got, okay.
I'll say it. So, who made the motion?
I did.
Motion by Frank Mew. Who made the second?
McFadden.
McFadden. Trustee Frank Mew?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Webster? Trustee Mitchell? Trustee Tyson?
Yeah.
And trustee Smith?
Yes.
Executive session at seven oh seven. We can stay right here.
You make a motion, I mean, any motion to second to go back and open session?
Trustee Smith make the motion.
Second by.
Tony Mitchell still on there?
No.
Second by Webster. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Frank Mew?
Yes.
And trustee Tony Mitchell is now.
Mayor.
What?
He said no, no.
Well, that's a couple of them.
No, but now we gotta go through all this again. What are you talking about?
You gotta go through what? Wait, hold. Everybody explained it, huh?
Okay, in executive session, we spoke about employment. So, um, we spoke about employment. I, I finished my discussion at the Cooper Pride Town Police Academy. Mayor sent for a motion to second to accept the four officers.
Trustee Smith make the motion. You come, they name.
Okay.
Motion by trustee Smith. Second by trustee Webster. Would you like to say the names, ma'am?
Second. We gave, you stand.
The boss for special.
Mosley Turner Short and Matt Quest. Okay. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Webster? Trustee Tyson?
Yeah.
Trustee Mew Springs?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, all, all right.
Trustee McFadden. Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell absent.
Motion to adjourn?
Right.
Yeah, Webster, you got, if you got the, um.
What?
The, the mouse, he's good to go by himself. He rode by himself, that's not correct.
Um, they're looking for a motion for approval. I have discussed in closed session, and the two names was who, or the one name?
Mosley and Mouse.
What? Mosley and Mouse?
Yes.
Yeah, Mouse. Need a motion?
Trustee Smith, I make the motion. I'm second.
Second by Frank Mew. Trustee Frank Mew?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yeah.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell? Mayor looking for a motion to adjourn?
Trustee Smith, I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by, you can't say, I say.
I know what to say.
Second by trustee McFadden, trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Frank Mew?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yeah.
Trustee Mitchell? Trustee Mitchell is absent. And the time is seven forty-one PM. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate you. Please go to HR, actually.
Okay, good, thank you. Good night.